Greetings. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. I have Ellis, Glenn Winkle, sorry, Lawler, and myself, with Commissioners Nye, Adams, and McCann, absent and excused. We are now at Commission Communications. Commissioners in the Communications. We are now at Staff Communications. Staff Communications.
Good evening Chair Winter. I'm Anna Slotinsky, the Planning Division Manager here in Beaverton. I have a couple of updates. One of them is that Beaverton Night Market, a much anticipated event, is back. It is celebrating its 10th anniversary and will be occurring at the Beaverton Round on Saturday, August 17th from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. Great event to keep in mind. And then a kind of fun tidbit, Beaverton has been named the best place to live, excuse me, the second best place to live in the West by livability.com. So there's a million, a million of those kinds of things out there, but it's always nice to get a shout out that appreciates Beaverton's special qualities. And that is all of my, all of my updates tonight.
Who got first?
I don't know. I'm reading like talking points from, that I get from the City Communications Specialist. So I'm actually not sure who we were runner up to.
Better than Tiger. New business. The only item on the agenda is the application for LU 42024-00403, Code Maintenance Project. Case number TA 42024-30042. Planning Commission's decision to recommend adoption of a text amendment must be based on consideration of, one, statewide planning goals and administrative rules adopted in chapter 197. Two, applicable federal or state statutes or real rules. Excuse me. Three, applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro. And four, the city's plan and development code, including Development Code Section 40-85-15. Testimony arguments and evidence must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the conference plan or development code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow this planning commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. State and local law requires commissioners to make certain disclosures. To this end, following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest? Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
I do not.
Commissioner Ellis.
No, I do not.
Commissioner Lawler.
I do not.
And I don't have one, any issues or conflicts. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? Let the record show no response. Order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation, followed by questions asked. Then members of the public in support of the application, up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We will now begin with staff presentation.
Good evening Commissioners. Chair Winter. Give me a second here to set my screen up.
Been a while since we've seen you.
It has, yes, it's nice to see you again. All right. So my name is Elena Sasson. I'm an Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. And I'm joined this evening by Planning Division Manager Anna Slotinsky, who will be participating in staff's presentation this evening, and by Jana Fox, current Planning Manager, and Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager, from whom you may also hear tonight. Are you, I apologize. What's, are you seeing my notes too, or just, yeah, all right?
Just your slide.
Just the slide or the notes as well?
Nope, just, no, just the slide. It was right.
Good.
Okay.
And you know what Elena, while, while you're resharing, I'll go ahead and, go ahead and start my, my intro. I just have a few short things to say and then I'll pass the, pass the facilitation of the presentation back to Elena. You know, Commission, as you know, the purpose of the Code Maintenance Project is to find and propose amendments to the Development Code that will make it work better, that will make the rules for Beaverton Development more clear, more efficient, and straightforward to implement. Staff is really excited to have, have the opportunity to make some of these fixes. And we hope that they, that you find them to be appropriate and worthy of recommending approval to the Beaverton City Council tonight. Elena will go over the proposal in a little bit more detail, but it really boils down to making a few basic types of changes. First, there are really minor changes that amount to resolving conflicts, making sure that, that the grammar is in the right place, really, really cleanups essentially. We're also digging a little bit deeper to fix some things in the code that don't work. There is code that has been implemented that has an intent to achieve a particular policy outcome that may not be able to achieve it because the code does not actually function the way that it was anticipated to. We're making some changes to ensure that those city policies are able to be successfully implemented. And then finally, we're taking the opportunity to propose some relatively minor changes that are required to implement state law. These are all changes that are consistent with current city policy rather than representing changes in direction for city land use policy. So with that, I will turn it over to Elena. Thank you.
Thank you Anna. All right. So the next, the next slide essentially covers just kind of what Anna went over. So I'm not going to spend too much time on it. But the general gist of the, of the project is a text amendment to the Beaverton Development Code. So there had been some questions from the public and I just want to clarify that there is no proposed physical development. These are amendments that are limited to the text within the Development Code. And they touch nearly every chapter of the Beaverton Development Code. And as Anna mentioned, they are intended to implement Oregon law to fix existing code sections that don't work, whether that's because they're unclear, contradictory, or just impractical to implement. And then there are a lot of kind of minor miscellaneous changes, such as removing references to old code sections that no longer exist and adding definitions that help implement existing standards and policies. And one of the reasons for these amendments, in addition to complying with, with state law, is that we haven't had an opportunity like this to address issues that keep coming up time and time again for a long time. The last time we've done something like this was back in, in 2019. So just to summarize, cleanups like this are really imperative to a, a better process and we intend to do them more regularly in the future. So in preparation for this evening, staff has provided the Planning Commission with proposed draft text amendments in red line format, as well as an index which outlines the proposed changes, accompanied by a brief explanation of, of those changes. These materials, as well as the staff report and clean copies, have also been made available to the public. Staff has been uploading these draft changes to the Code Maintenance Project webpage, a public webpage, that, since June 27th. So every time we've made changes, we've, we've uploaded it to this website so anybody can, can follow it along. So the goal with this presentation this evening is not necessarily to go over every single detail and every single proposed change, but rather highlight changes that may be of interest by chapter. However, these highlights are, are guesses to some extent in terms of what may be of interest. So staff is more than, than happy and open to discussing anything else that the commission or, or public would like to discuss in the proposed changes. So starting with Chapter 20 amendments. One of the, the kind of biggest changes is including a new use to the land use tables, which is single room occupancies. House Bill 3395 requires that local governments allow for this type of development everywhere that residential uses are permitted. Currently developed, the Development Code considers single room occupancies or I believe it's currently called single residency occupancies as a type of temporary living quarters, which in our definition also includes hotels and motels. And temporary living quarters are, are either require conditional use or are prohibited in, in a lot of zones. And so this change would take single room occupancies out of that existing category of temporary living, temporary living quarters and establish it as a separate use with its own definition and, and would, would implement it like it does other housing types. We are also proposing, or the changes to Chapter 20 include removing the requirement for a conditional use approval in the Neighborhood Service Commercial Zone. So within that zone currently, any residential use is subject to a conditional use approval, which is a discretionary type three process, subject to a public hearing and discretionary approval criteria. Residential uses in the NS Zone are also limited to 50% of the contiguous area in that zone. The proposed amendments would remove the requirement for the conditional use permit, but would retain that limit on the 50% residential use in the contiguous zone, maintaining that same kind of intent of that existing footnote to set aside some land in that zone for non-residential uses as well. Lastly, proposed changes to Chapter 20 include exempting some uses, such as parks, transit centers. Think there are some other kind of utilities from minimum floor area standards. This exemption would not exempt these uses from whatever review they're currently subject to, but would simply acknowledge that not all of these permitted or conditionally permitted uses in the zones require a lot of floor area to function. So for example, a park might not have any floor area at all, or they might provide a really small structure for restrooms or similar facilities that would not necessarily meet the minimum floor area in the zone. So by providing this exemption, it would eliminate the need for a separate request for an adjustment from this standard. In Chapter 40, the Applications Chapter, proposed changes include adding a new land use application called Housing Adjustment. This application is in response to Senate Bill 1537, which requires that cities provide a mechanism to grant adjustments to certain standards that are listed in the bill for housing that produces a minimum of 17 units per acre. This application differs from our existing adjustment applications in the Development Code and that it includes, it includes approval criteria that's a lot more attainable. Our current adjustment applications have sites, require that applicants demonstrate a site-specific hardship, which is pretty limiting in terms of who is actually able to apply for and receive adjustments with those, with those existing applications. Chapter 40 amendments also include modifying the thresholds, or sorry, not the thresholds, but a threshold within the minor modification of a conditional use and the major modification of a conditional use application. The proposed amendment would exempt accessory structures, non-habitable structures, up to 1,000 square feet from meeting the threshold for those applications. In other words, if you are, you've got an existing conditional use approval and you're proposing a, a small structure that doesn't, that doesn't exceed 1,000 square feet and it is not going to be generating any additional trips, members, users to the site, whatever that particular conditional use might stipulate, then you would not have to go through the modification of a conditional use application. This is really the result of a lot of requests staff have received over the years of conditional uses, such as churches and schools, wanting to place a small storage shed on their site and finding themselves having to go through this modification of a conditional use application, when really the extent of their conditional use is not really changing, they just need a place to store some equipment. Other proposed amendments in Chapter 40 take a new approach to accessory structures. Because our existing definitions of building and structure and the prolific use of these terms throughout the code and sometimes the interchangeable use of these terms throughout the code makes it really unclear which standards are intended to apply to all types of structures, some structures. It is just, it's really convoluted and unclear if something applies to a structure that is a trash enclosure or to like a mixed-use building. Both of those things would, would meet the definition of building and so it makes it a little bit difficult to differentiate if like the glazing requirement should apply to the trash enclosure, for example. And so the changes in Chapter 40 really try to, to distinguish, make, make some changes that would distinguish between the different types of accessory structures and clearly identify that accessory structures 120, over 120 square feet or taller than one story would be subject to design review or downtown design review if it's in the downtown district. Amendments in Chapter 40 also include updating the Design Review 2 application so that it functions similarly to the way that the Downtown Design Review 2 application does, as well as the Single Detached and Middle Housing Design Review 2 applications do. So this would allow for limited discretion through the Type 2 process. More specifically, the proposed amendment would allow up to three Design Review Guidelines to be addressed through the Type 2 process. This is a similar approach that's already taken with our Downtown Design Review 2 application, where applicants are able to address up to three guidelines. And then with the Single Detached and Middle Housing Design Review 2 application, we have Type 2 guidelines that applicants are able to address for some, for a limited amount of discretion. And finally, for Chapter 40, staff would like to highlight the proposed new approach to reviewing alterations to historic landmarks. So currently, any modifications to inventory historic landmarks in the downtown district require, essentially require two applications. One for the historic review alteration of a landmark, which really encourages the preservation of that, of that building, of its historic style and architecture. And then at the same time, because it's located in the downtown district and modifications are proposed, it's subject to downtown design review, which requires compliance with Chapter 70, which are our new standards. And sometimes those things are in conflict with each other or at, at odds with each other. And so the proposed new approach in, in Chapter 40 would be that his alterations to historic landmarks are only required to go through the alteration of landmark application, unless they're doing things like adding on to the building or making site changes, things that meet other downtown design review thresholds. In Chapter 50, which outlines the procedural requirements, the proposed amendments include clarifying when a notice is required in the event that an application is withdrawn. The proposed language would only require that a notice be, be issued when the whole development proposal is withdrawn, not when one application or more than one application is withdrawn from an application package. So for example, we often receive things like a land revision application that is coupled with a sidewalk design modification application. If in the, after submittal, revisions have been made to the plans and the applicant is able to demonstrate compliance with the sidewalk standards and, and finds that that sidewalk design modification is no longer needed and wants to withdraw that application, they may do so and the proposed text would not require that they, that they would have to notice that, that withdraw of the, of the application, whereas currently that is what our code requires. The other changes in Chapter 50 are in response to House Bill 3395, specifically changes related to completeness review timelines for housing. And as previously mentioned, accessory structures have caused some confusion. And so in Chapter 60, proposed amendments include adding a new table to outline the applicability of the Design Review Standards and Guidelines to the different types of accessory structures. There are also a variety of amendments to the Design Review Standards and Guidelines themselves that are intended to clarify how and when these standards and guidelines apply. For example, there's a standard that speaks to the undifferentiated blank walls for residential uses. And the proposed amendments add minimum dimensions to, to that standard to clarify how it should be applied. Other Design Review Amendments include consistently applying landscape-related terms, such as open space, active open space, and common open space, which currently seem to be used interchangeably and, and also add to, to some confusion. Additionally, changes that are intended to clarify how lighting standards are applied at property lines are proposed. And once again, coming back to accessory structures, Section 50 or 60.5005, currently known as accessory structures and uses, is proposed to be restructured and repurposed as residential, residential accessory structures and applicable only to single detached dwellings and middle housing types in residential zones. Accessory structures that fit these parameters would not be subject to design review and would have to comply with that particular section. And similarly, accessory structures that are outside of these zones and are not for these uses would not have to comply with this section. They would be subject to Design Review Standards and Guidelines. Proposed Chapter 70 amendments, which are limited to the downtown district, include exempting some uses for minimum floor area standards, like we are also proposing in Chapter 20. Other amendments in Chapter 70 are in response to Senate Bill 1537, which requires again that cities grant adjustments to certain standards, including Design Review Standards identified in the bill. Most of these Design Review Standards can already be adjusted through an existing Design Review Guideline or through the new proposed Housing Adjustment Application. However, the bill also requires that adjustments be granted to any kind of prohibitions on ground floor residential uses and standards that regulate facade materials. Therefore, proposed changes in Chapter 70 reflect these, these requirements from the bill and add some flexibility to the ground floor uses along active, active frontages and related to some materials that are currently prohibited in Chapter 70. And lastly, Chapter 90 is dedicated entirely to definitions, but some noteworthy amendments include adding the definition of drive aisle and updating the definition of driveway. In addition to creating two separate definitions for these maneuvering areas, two new visual aids are also proposed, which we're really excited about because they're very helpful. And then the definition of floor area is also proposed to be refined to reflect more recent changes to the Development Code, specifically changes to the types of development that we're seeing in new middle housing types. Proposed amendments also include updating the definition of open space to reflect the proposed changes in Chapter 60 relating to landscape requirements. And we're proposing to add a new definition of single room occupancies to comply with House Bill 3395. And lastly, there are a variety of changes in Chapter 90 that propose removing, removing definitions that reference provisions that no longer exist, for example, solar access. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the City Council of the Code Maintenance Project Text Amendment. Thank you very much for your time and staff is open to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sasson. Are there any questions of staff with regard to the proposed amendments? Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, thank you for that. That was, that was a hell of a run-through and a lot of detail. So good job there. Maybe just a pedantic question. I'm reading, I'm reading Chapter 70, Proposed Changes. And in the materials that were provided that showed the, the summary of the proposed text amendments and then the staff comments on the individual ones, there's some, some highlighted text that kind of focuses on like what the major differences are. And I'm specifically looking at the one 70 dot 15 dot 1 zero dot 1, dot 2, dot 3, dot 4, those, those four. This is exempting existing single detached dwellings from minimum density standards. This is a very dumb question, I'm sorry, but it, it looks like in the text it's saying that we would exempt existing dwellings from minimum density standards, including if they, if the dwelling was replaced with a new dwelling. What, what's the definition of replaced? Replacement of detached dwelling?
Thank you Commissioner Ellis. That is not a silly question. It is one that we haven't really refined either and maybe we will with a future text amendment. So staff in, in reviewing this section found that the replacements of detached dwellings were permitted in the table and so just decided to identify that and call that out specifically. It's not necessarily proposing a change, it's just trying to make code sections consistent in terms of specifically answering your questions about what constitutes a replacement. We don't have a specific definition or parameters. That hasn't happened yet thankfully, so we haven't had to address that. But, but yeah, it's just simply just trying to reconcile different sections of Chapter 70 by calling that out.
Okay, cool. So, so it's, it's more of an administrative change, but we don't yet have like a definition that says replaced means down to the foundation or, or stripped back to the studs, whatever. We don't, we don't have, have that necessarily.
Not specific to replacements, no.
Okay, cool. And, and then the other clarity question, I was just trying to make sure that I was understanding the public comment related to, this is Chapter 20 on the NS. the public comment related to, this is Chapter 20 on the NS Zone, so the proposed amendment removing the conditional use requirement on the 50% buffer. The, the public comment was, was commenting on, depending on the area in question, if, if 50% of the area was redeveloped as residential, they were worried that it would be too crowded, it would not leave enough room for other services, et cetera, et cetera. If you could talk a little bit more about this one, it, it sounds like, it sounds like with this change that fundamentally, nothing actually changes. There, there's still, even with the limit today, or sorry, with the requirement today, it still could be developed up to 50% residential. It would just go through the conditional use process versus the change would say, there's still a limit, we just don't have the process. Am I understanding that correctly?
Absolutely, yeah, 100%. So like you, like you just said, there is no change to the area in which the residential use could be developed, it's still limited to 50%. It's just now that instead of making them go through a hearing for, for that housing, they would be able to just build it, permit it outright, but would still have to demonstrate that the area does not exceed that 50% limit.
Okay, very cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We're now at the public testimony portion of our meeting. We will call testimony, we will call for testimony in group, starting with those in favor of the application. And those in opposition to the application, and those either in favor nor in opposition. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the phrase "and" feature in your Zoom menu bar. Calling in, press 9 to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And I'm getting communication that says there is no. Right, public testimony in opposition to the application. Yes, I need to reread that. Now is the time for public testimony in opposition to the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the phrase "and" feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press 9 to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And I'm getting, nope, say there are still none. Thank you. Staff has stated we don't have any public testimony in opposition. Now is the time for those that are neither in support nor opposition. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the phrase "and" feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press 9 to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And again, I'm getting messages that say there is nothing going on. If staff has stated that we do not have any public testimony, either in favor nor opposed, does the staff have any final comments?
No other comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sussun. Does the city attorney have any final comments?
Chair, I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comments completed. I will close the public hearing. And as is standard procedure, I will randomly pull commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Commissioner Ellis, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I, I appreciate staff clarifying my questions for me. I, I reviewed each of the, the chapter changes, and as far as I can see, everything looks sensible and, and, and straight in line. And a big thank you to staff for, for the depth of work on this one, as well as responding to the, the various kind of non sequitur public comments in there. I think y'all did a great job of adding clarity to that stuff right at the front of your report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Um, I also want to thank the staff for all the work that they put into getting all of this cleaned up. I'm sure that it's a relief to them to get things nice and tidy and probably was a lot of work, so I appreciate you guys bringing it to us, and everything looks good to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Glenn Winkle. Commissioner Lawler? Anything to add?
Yeah, I similarly would like to compliment staff, especially since they asked us how we would like to have this massive amount of information organized, and I think they did an excellent job of doing such. And I appreciate the summary and all of the accompanying exhibits, so. Great job, and I think I have no other, nothing else to add.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawler. I too would like to commend staff and, and the entire planning staff on giving us all of this information as early as they possibly could. It was great not having it. Trying to have watermelon. So commissioners, is there a motion to approve, deny, or continue?
I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the City Council that they approve LU42024-00403, the Code Maintenance Project Case File TA42024-00402, based on the facts and findings in the July 24th staff report and the accompanying exhibits.
I have a motion. Excuse me. What will be taken by roll call? When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Ellis?
Sorry, Vice President, do we need a second on the motion?
Right, and I scooped, nailed right by that.
Oh, apologies.
I, I would like to have somebody second Commissioner Lawler's recommendation to the City Council.
Yep, I'll second the recommendation.
Thank you, and thank you for finding me that I skipped right over that second process. Now, we'll move on to the voting process. Commissioner Ellis, yea or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle, yea or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler, yea or nay?
Aye.
And I am in favor as well. So it is four to zero. The motion passes unanimously. Planning Commission's decision will be memorialized in land, land use orders that will be provided to all quarters that provided oral testimony. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the Council. Council will hold a hearing and make the final decision on this application. They are now adjourned at 7:06 PM.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Staff's flooding in. Nope, no further.